My name is Albert Khan. I'm the Executive Director of STOP, the Surveillance Technology Oversight Project, and we're a civil rights, police accountability, and privacy organization based here in New York City at the Urban Justice Center. And I've submitted formal testimony for the record that was prepared with the assistance of our resident technologist, Liz O'Sullivan. And like so many people here, I was very excited by the prospect of the task force when the council enacted it into law, when we took this leading role in trying to provide an accountability framework for these increasingly powerful forms of artificial intelligence and other automated decision systems that are being deployed across the city and across the country. But while I had the pleasure of working with the task force for its hearings last year, attending those sessions, it quickly became clear that we weren't living up to the expectations that advocates and lawmakers had for what this task force would be doing. You know, there are a number of specific issues I detail in the testimony, but on a high level, they can be broken down into, you know, various groups, one of which is the fact that, as we've heard repeatedly, you cannot build a roadmap to the future if you don't know where you are today. You cannot build a comprehensive framework for ADS if you don't know what those tools look like, how they're being used, what the limitations are. And so it's indispensable to have access to a complete understanding of what tools are being used throughout the city if we're to have a meaningful framework for ADS regulation. Another difficulty is the fact that we've had this limited public engagement. This is a tough subject. It is a tough subject to have a citywide campaign to really engage the public on what it means to regulate ADS. There are a lot of technical barriers, and we need those individuals who are being impacted on by this, whether it's what school their kid goes to, or what, how they're treated in a pre-sentencing context, or, you know, housing issues. We need them to have a way to meaningfully understand how these tools work and how this task force is potentially addressing those issues. But we have not seen that style of engagement with the public, and what we're seeing now is an improvement with these planned fora, but it's too little, too late. And to make the most of the time remaining for the task force, we need a larger citywide effort, not simply to have forums, but to have forums where members of the public can interact with task force members, where they can hold those members accountable, where we have much more public engagement and public education as a preliminary step to make sure that, you know, you don't just have self-selection of the people who are already engaged on this issue. Because, I mean, I'm sure that if you start to have this conversation with a lot of constituents, it will take time for them to understand what this is and how it's impacting their lives. We also have concerns about the lack of leadership by task force members. You know, though, if you look at the law itself, it talks about members who are from nonprofits that represent individuals impacted by ADS, as well as technical experts in the field, and yet those individuals have not been leading the day-to-day management of the task force. Instead, it's been outside consultants, it's been individuals from the administration who have been really taking leadership of the direction of the task force process. And it's wonderful to have engagement from such experienced and knowledgeable individuals in the administration, but for this to be an independent body that truly holds city agencies accountable for how they deploy ADS, it needs to be these outside experts who are the ones leading not just the internal discussions, but also the drafting process and the overall work of the task force. And similarly, I think really, given how little time is left, it's urgent that the council reestablish and reassert its expectations for what a task force report will constitute, to make sure that we don't have a high-level thought document, but that we have a document that goes into specific best practices for ADS, that goes into some of the issues we've seen, not just around transparency, but about fairness and accessibility. And with that, I'll end my remarks.
Any members want to ask questions?
Chair, I have a question about the unintended consequences that were referred to in your testimony regarding the city's court administrate, the applications of AI in the court.
You want a specific example?
Yes, exactly, please, yeah.
Yeah, so what I mentioned was a pre-trial risk assessment, and just to be clear, there's risk assessments used throughout the criminal justice system, that's just one specific case. And one major concern, which was profiled in ProPublica and many other great articles, is a great concern for racial bias, in that if you have a system that is disproportionately filled with Black and Latino individuals, and you're creating a statistical model that's looking at the current prison population to gauge who may be at risk for not showing up for court, then you're more likely to have an out, or have a risk assessment that's going to lean towards the population that's already disproportionately represented within the jail population. So that's just one specific concern, but then you can have other concerns depending on the type of risk assessment, and this is why knowing what the city is actually using is specific, or important, because there's some risk assessments that only look at the individual who is being assessed information, and other risk assessments that generalize based on the jail population or other criminal justice data. And in the former that I described, that is more preferential to some in that you're actually getting an independent decision about that individual, whereas some other tools, you're making generalized suggestions based on a generalized group, which you could lead to some concerns about disparate impact and other issues.
I wonder if the, if the city Department of Health is using any of this technology?
So there, I can only speculate based on research of looking nationally, but there is at least one system that I know is being pushed by the CDC that's looking at HIV, in trying to identify individuals who will be more likely to contract HIV based on existing populations and relationships, or like a social network monitoring type system. And that, I don't know for a fact if the city is using, but that's one that I know is being pushed by the federal government, and there's funds that comes with using that type of program. And then there are other types of programs, like other STI monitoring programs that can be used in prescription monitoring databases, where you want to look at doctors who may be over-prescribing or individuals.
Yeah, but I think that could be very helpful with the opioid crisis that we're facing right now.
Yeah, but the problem is, I'm giving you examples based on doing research globally and nationally, and I don't know for a fact if any, if any city agency is using any of this.
I mean, that could be very helpful.
And one thing to keep in mind is that these tools can be incredibly helpful in better allocating city resources, but, you know, the city has seen historically what happens when you use an analytical framework that proves to be inaccurate or based off of faulty assumptions. I mean, historically, in FDNY staffing, we saw back in the, I believe it was the 60s and 70s, an example of a RAN study that made certain assumptions about how many firehouses were needed based off of certain models of how fired, how the fire department was utilized. That resulted in a huge increase in the amount of fires that went on as a result, because there was faulty data, faulty assumptions. And in all of these contexts, we're dealing with more sophisticated tools that, to the extent we're not policing the data and the underlying algorithms for bias, for errors, for other things that can distort the outcome, they may actually make things worse rather than making things better.
And to give one more example that I think should be of major concern to this committee and the city as a whole, is that there's major cost to these systems that we don't fully understand. And one specific example, which I don't know if the city is using, are public benefit algorithms that help assess who may be eligible or terminated, or the level of benefit for SNAP, Medicaid, and other public benefits. And there's been lawsuits in Arkansas, Idaho, and a few other states that have resulted in huge settlements that the state has had to give up, and those states are now still trying to figure out how to redo or fix what was already done. And that's something where we're now looking back a few years to see what's happening, and it still is not resolved. But if we don't have a good grasp on what's currently being used, I also think the city would be very concerned about liability in the long run of these systems.
That's, that's probably true. But I think in the area of public health, it could be extremely helpful, particularly with juvenile issues, you know, related to obesity and chronic health conditions that sometimes develop later on in life as a result of lack of access to nutrition, or park space, or, you know, these are things that we know to be common sense, but if we can find a way to really work it into a system that can help us make decisions and allocate resources, it might be very helpful.
And I'll just say, my emphasis on the risk does not mean that I don't understand, there are tons of benefits that can be gained.
Yeah, I'm concerned about privacy rights and people's ability not to be monitored by big government, everything from, you know, where they go, what they eat, their blood pressure, their, you know, what they had for dinner last night. It's nobody's business, quite frankly. But, you know, with respect to, again, the, the public health, and also education, educational outcomes, I think the Department of Education, they spend hundreds of millions of dollars on consultants and contracts that we don't even know about, we have to find out about it at the hearings, at budget time, that if there was anywhere to harness some of this technology to really try to look at student outcomes, and how students learn, and how we can put them on a better track, reaching their full potential, I think AI could be very helpful, because it does take away the bias when, when, when it does have the right variables in, you know, in the algorithm.
I actually wanted to push back on that point, because I would say actually, all AI is biased. The question is whether you can reduce that bias to a level below what you see with human decision-makers, but even in the best circumstances, you will see some elements of bias entering these systems, either in how they, in what data is used, in how that data is evaluated, in the myriad of subjective decisions that go into shaping how these tools work. And so AI as a class is no different than human decision-makers, say like judges. You can have a judge who you think is making consistently good decisions, you can have a judge who you think is making consistently bad decisions, but they're all using subjective heuristics. And AI can be more powerful, but that doesn't mean it's more fair, and it doesn't mean that it's more effective.
And who would, just very quickly, who, I'm ignorant to this, but who are the major developers of the AI technologies that are being sold to municipalities? Who are we buying them from? Is it Microsoft? Is it Google? I don't know.
Yeah, so I can give you some generic names, but you really have to get down into the types of use and what agency uses, because there's some vendors that only work in certain sectors. So you have all the big companies, so IBM, Microsoft, Google, Amazon, they all offer services that the city probably is using in some regard, but then you also have smaller companies. So to narrow in on a specific, in policing, there's technologies called predictive policing, which help determine where a crime may occur, or who may be a victim or perpetrator of a crime. And there, you have sort of niche vendors like Hunch Lab, Palantir, Predpol, and they primarily work in the policing space. So it's like you really have to get into what sector are you interested in, and then look at the vendors.
But you mentioned Microsoft, right? So does Microsoft currently contract with the city to provide AI, and in what area? I don't know, I'm not familiar.
Well, one of the difficulties we have is that since the task force hasn't been given a comprehensive list of the AI and ADS systems that are being used by agencies, I don't think there's anyone in this room who can give you an answer, yeah.
Why don't we know that?
Well, there's one of you have a lot of tasks.
Yeah, okay, but, but when is the task force going to be done and tell us? I mean, that's the...
You were saying the same thing Thursday.
They said they're...
We need a lot more information, we need to know a lot about the task force before it starts.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you.
Counselor, do you have a question?
Yeah, yes, and I think in some ways we'll follow on all these lines, but I, I'm gonna ask you for sort of a little real-time consulting, but that I think is designed to help us better understand kind of what is ADR as well. And actually, I think I asked Noel this, sort of some similar questions at the COPIC hearing that we had. So I'm currently working on a bill, and I'm not sure whether it's ADR or not. So I have been focused on dealing with reckless drivers who put New Yorkers at grave risk of death and injury. About a year ago, a driver in my district killed two young kids, and it turned out that she had five speed camera and red light violations in the preceding year. And so there was some indication that she was a reckless driver, and perhaps if we had acted on that before, then she would not have killed these two young kids. We then, Twitter sort of took to using the existing data about the camera violations, and started to look at how many other drivers are there with that bad a record. And it turned out, she was in the top 1% of reckless drivers, but that, that means there are about 25,000 other drivers who have equally bad or worse track record of driving. They had had violations of that, you know, five or more in a year. So we're putting a bill together to say, when you get to five, we want there to be a consequence. Most people, if you get just one of those tickets, you don't get a second one. But this set of people, like, in my opinion, they're driving sociopathically, they don't care about, you know, the hell, they care more about their convenience than the lives of their neighbors. So we would like to, like, make them take a class that's been proven to reduce recidivism in reckless driving, and if not, boot or impound their cars until they do. So that's a kind of automated decision-making, like, we are making a decision, I think, that that set of people are, have a risk of causing harm. Now, it's based on behaviors, not on identity, but it, you know, I don't know for sure that, which ones of those 25,000 are going to injure or kill someone if we don't make them do this class. So I guess a couple of questions. Like, one, we're making the algorithmic decisions, in this case, like, in the legislation, but, so it's pretty transparent at least, although I could see giving DOT the ability to adjust it over time, so that if they discover better predictive information, like, if they could add hit-and-run information, which currently is, like, locked away in NYPD file drawers, so we just don't have it electronically. So I guess a couple of questions. Is that automated decision-making? And therefore, like, should it show up in the task force's information? Like, where's the line between using data and leaving it to some, you know, computer to do the AI or algorithmic work? Yeah, let me, let me just leave it there and ask for your help in thinking, Mr. ...
Okay. So I think there is a way to see what you described as an automated decision system, but there's a few details I would need to know to feel more confident in that.
And I'm more wishing to help us understand the boundaries than, you know...
So if, let's say you had some type of matching algorithm or alert system, so you could identify who, within the existing database, already has five or more violations, that's the technical part, but there's still some type of human decision-making. And what, and what I just described there is most of the systems that we're seeing used in government right now, in that they're assisting, or in, or in some cases, supplanting government decision-making, but using some type of technical system to either analyze, predict, or identify people within existing data. So I'd, I'd say loosely, yes, on a broad definition, that could fit an automated decision system.
And having worked with your staff on the bill, one, one concern that comes up with this, as with any form of predictive policing, is we frame it as, we're basing it off of behavior, not identity, but when you drill down, you're using a data set of who has gotten five of these violations. That then requires us to look at where the cameras are that are detecting those violations. It makes us look at, is there, are these cameras placed equally throughout the city, or are they disproportionately in neighborhoods where New Yorkers of color will be identified and receive violations, where poor individuals will be identified? And those sorts of elements of bias can come in like any other form of ADS. And so wherever we're trying to eliminate the human discretion, the human decision-making that would potentially evaluate those differences and create a uniform rule, I do think the same sort of ADS concerns come into play. That doesn't mean we shouldn't do it, but it means that we need to be rigorous in how we test those sort of ADS tools to make sure that we aren't creating additional levels of bias in the, in the system.
Okay. I mean, I think that's helpful, and as you know, like, we've been trying to think about that in this one, and, and make sure, and I think a standard that would say, the, you know, the, the algorithm is transparent, and we test it for disparate impact, seem sensible to me. I guess my, my next question is, I understand the concern that, like, if we only have a level of generality, that is more or less what I just said, I, you know, the task force might not be able to do useful work, if it sort of is so general that it, you know, without, but what would it look like at another, you know, I guess on the flip side, you know, saying every time we use dat, you know, I don't know, how do we figure out the right level of specificity? Because it doesn't seem realistic to expect that every time we are using some kind of data analysis or algorithm, we could subject it to the kind of transparency and scrutiny and analysis. So, you know, how do we find a middle ground that is, yeah, I mean, I guess that's my question. How do we find a reasonable middle ground?
I, I think there's definitely a spectrum of responses, and we could go with a variety of different routes. I think for something as ambitious as the task force, part of the hope was that we would create best practices. Maybe we wouldn't analyze each and every system and give it a report card or a scorecard on how well it's doing, but that we'd come up with a framework for analyzing those tools, and then going forward, that framework could be used to educate New Yorkers, empower them when they are the victim of discriminatory ADS, and really create that system. The, you know, because in 18 months, you couldn't do that. You couldn't create something that was future-proof and was robust enough to hit each and every one of those tools. But it's, so I can certainly understand there would be a flip side where we're trying to create a watchdog that's looking at each and every Excel document, and, and say, government, that's obviously not what we want, but I think there's a lot of room between where we are and where that would be.
And I would also add, I supplied the letter we sent last August, that was recommendations based on a general understanding of the problem. So we, that's an attempt at starting a conversation, or at least some discourse, on what could a middle ground be without specificity. But the reason why it's important for the city council to have specific examples, because there's some recommendations, like disparate impact, that will vary by the types of use cases by agency, and other issues that I think we gave a starting ground of, here's what we're thinking based on our general understanding, but it's important to narrow in based on the concerns and specifics.
And let me be clear, I don't mean that there shouldn't be specific examples available to and analyzed by the task force. I'm thinking more downstream to what are the kinds of recommendations, you know, so for example, you know, audits are something you do when you have a, a set of rules you want to apply. It's not reasonable to expect that there'll be a front-end process, visible and transparent, and through public review every time you do it, but you don't just want to, like, wave your hand and hope, and so you, like, audit a certain set of them for compliance. So, yeah, I mean, obviously, we need, I mean, I totally, I share your point, and I think the committee, it seems like, is in sync, that the task force will need specific examples to workshop, develop some clear best practices, and come to a set of recommendations that aren't just such high-level principles that they can't have impact. I'm just trying to think a little bit at how we would make sure that our systems broadly were complying with them once we got through it.
And of course, there are ways to automate that process, and to have additional layers of review. It wouldn't necessarily have to be manual human review for each and every tool, but to the extent you had that framework, you could imagine, you know, having a parallel to NYC's Open Data Initiative, there would be some sort of portal that would allow different access to different programs, or you could have different standards depending on the scale of the ADS. So there are a lot of different ways you could, you could scale it up so that it was proportional to the tool that was being deployed. But, and hopefully, in its final recommendations, the task force will have a framework along those lines.
And just to be clear, there's also a lot of work, I think, that would fall on the vendors during, and this would be part of a procurement process, so things that are not already in use in the city. And one specific example is that, from, that I've learned from doing research in this area, is not, a lot of the systems already used in government, there haven't been specific validation or bias studies done. And having a requirement where any vendor that's contracting with the city, or any type of service or product that's used in the city, there's been confirmed that there's been a study, and it's been reviewed and open to either experts or those in the city to review, is something that would technically fall on the vendor, but would give greater assurances than we have right now.
Thank you.
So thank you. So let me ask you, Mr. Kane, a question. So in your testimony, you have stated that Jeanette Family Foundation, so can you tell us more about these meetings?
Oh, yes. So as part of the task force meetings, we had the Jane Family Foundation preparing documents to assist with the task force. And one thing that drew complaints from several members was that, you know, you know, this was not a task force member, it was not an organization that was officially part of the process, and yet they were, for some portions of our work, you know, driving much of that process, to the point where they were creating proposed language for sign-off by task force members, and, you know, providing, you know, in some ways, rather than supporting the process, at times it felt like they were steering the process.
So what do you expect from the task force? What do you expect from the task force and its report?
Unfortunately, at this point, I don't know what to expect. It, there's very little time left for drafting a report of the scale we're discussing, and given that we're only now beginning public engagement, to the extent that the report is responsive to the engagement we see at future meetings, it, it's impossible to predict what the report will say in the end. But given that we heard earlier today that there is not even consensus around the definition of what an ADS is, it's hard for me to see how we go from that position today to having a comprehensive framework for how you evaluate, regulate, and, you know, use ADS in the future.
So let me ask you a very important question for Paul. What ADS are important to examine? What ADS are important to examine, in your opinion?
So it's a little hard to answer, because I don't want to create a hierarchy of risk with different use cases, but I do think some of the use cases in criminal justice, public health, child welfare, education, are all examples where there's a heightened risk of civil rights and liberties being implicated in problematic ways, but the absence of listing off other use cases, I wouldn't want to say those aren't equally important, because part of the problem we have is a lack of transparency. So if we don't fully understand the spectrum of use cases, then it's difficult to sort of rank which risks are higher than another.
I, I agree to an extent, it's a known unknown. What I would say is, in my mind, to the extent that you are going to create any sort of prioritization, it should be proportional to the potential deprivation of liberty. So where we're dealing with tools that potentially can deprive people of their freedom, you know, policing tools, that those, to me, would be some of the highest priorities. But then again, as someone who heads a police accountability organization, we clearly have an institutional bias in that direction.
And I would also say any type of tool that would have a negative effect on outcomes of an individual, so that's where you get the education and child welfare type of examples.
Do you have any suggestions as to how the task force and its processes could be improved?
Well, I believe Ms. Richardson has submitted letters that detail a number of suggestions from a coalition of organizations, and, you know, we stand by those suggestions, and we continue to believe that the items we lay out, such as, you know, expanded community engagement, are quite crucial for this process and the time left.
So how do you see your involvement over the task force?
At this point, it's a little unclear. As I mentioned in my opening remarks, we still don't even know the format of the upcoming hearings, or what level of engagement will be allowed. So if I'm allowed to give testimony, I'd look forward to participating in that capacity, and also bringing along any other advocates and researchers who have a point of view to share. But given that we're at April 4th, and the first hearing is April 30th, and we have no clue on how we can even engage, I'm a little concerned at how I may be able to proceed.
Similarly, I would welcome the opportunity to testify or engage in those public hearings, but it, it's unclear at this point. And to clarify my testimony, as I said in the written document, while I participated in the task force hearings, the internal meetings, I was never officially a member of the task force, but I would also welcome the opportunity to continue some unofficial role with it.
Thank you. Yeah. Any more questions? So, okay, one more question. Did you know about similar task forces in other jurisdictions?
So in the March 1st letter that I provided, we listed off a few examples. So Vermont followed suit of New York, and I've heard that from people in Vermont, in creating a statewide task force. And currently, there's legislation pending in Massachusetts, in Washington, and a few other states and localities are contemplating similar legislation to create bodies to look at similar issues.
And we also have examples from Pennsylvania, from California. We, you know, really, it's quite sad that something that we were a national leader in, we're now falling behind these other localities in their level of public engagement.
Yeah. Thank you for your testimony. We will review your suggestions and take a public...